Hello everyone, this is Chidi in Toronto. Today we're bringing you a cutscene of Take It Back Television, the Texas Town Hall meeting of Shoroure. As you all know, Worship Media is a strong supporter of the Take It Back movement and we're gonna keep following them, we'll bring you updates and wherever they are, we're gonna follow them and bring you whatever they're doing. Please subscribe to our channel if you have not, click the notification button so you get updates whatever there's a new event and leave us a comment and a thumbs up, thumbs down, it doesn't matter. But, I hope you enjoyed the video and I'll see you next time something happens. Thank you.
Thank you, young students. We welcome you now this evening. I want to introduce Mr. Fomile Oluwe. This afternoon, to introduce our guest with your host, please, Mr. Oluwembe. Take it back! So, I'd be nice to introduce the candidate today and I have a little bit of things to say before we do that. My name is Fomile Oluwe. The background is that I was Students' Union President at University of Lagos, 1998-99. So I was four years behind when Oyeli Shoroure was President of the university. So I speak firsthand, from firsthand experience. Now, before I go into that, I have a question. Who here is Euro? Good. Who is Igbo? Good, good. Keke Wani, and Masukogbe Igbo. Who is Hausa? Who is some Delino Bell? Benin Esako? Thank you. So, I will not exhaust, I will not be exhaustive, but it's a trick question. Do you notice that when politicians are stealing our money, it doesn't matter where you're from? Thieves have no tribal coloration. So, I made a little crack, I said, I speak a little Igbo. That's because I did my youth service in Anambra State. One of the greatest years of my life. I was Students' Government President, as I said earlier, which meant I had all the chances in the world to walk up to the Students' Dean and say, "Put me, you know, in some state or another." I said, "No, just send me where you want to send me." So I went to Anambra State and I loved the people, I loved the food. The problem is, the roads, you try to go from, you know, as soon as you get off the bridge, Anonicha, you're going to, you know, Weli, all that direction, or going further north, Elubu and all that. It's the same horrible story. I went and begged my father, my father passed away last September and I'm from Abu Ghraib. The roads were horrible, there were no tribal colorations to the conditions of the road, right? So, the point is, the first charge I want to ask everybody today is to drop that. The people who really want to eat us dry do not care where we're from. So it's time to start saying, maybe it's not one tribe against the other, maybe it's the thieves, the brigands, versus people who just want a decent life for themselves. You go to streets in Lagos and trash the stick over an entire street. And that's a country with a GDP of about 1.2 trillion dollars. The problem is the people who are feeding fat on Nigeria's wealth, they just stay up there in Abuja. 1999, when democracy came to Nigeria, the story was a furniture allowance, if you remember that correctly. So, you're not coming to tell us, and then you see senators on YouTube dancing, and then you're worrying, and saying, "We have so much promise." Nigeria should be the kind of country in Africa whose behavior, whose president should set everybody else in motion. But we're too busy fighting over the crumbs that fall on their table. So you go to all the fancy hotels in Lagos and it's Bobby George with his orderly. I wonder why he has an orderly in the first place? Trying to meet someone and that. So, let us begin to, I ask, I'm not hectoring you, but let us begin to ask ourselves what really matters in the life of Nigeria. And that's the second to this. So, someone, a classmate of Shoroure when he came to the US and was finishing up his masters in Colombia, told me that, he sent me an email, said he had heard about all his activities in Nigeria and asked me to write something about him. So this was what I wrote at the time. Remember, I was not running for president, this was 16 years ago. So hopefully you consider this to be a personal validation when there was nothing at stake, absolutely nothing. I wasn't looking to him to, you know, to be kind to me now that you're running for president. This was the guy I knew when the stake was zero. So please, consider that to be the background while I read what I have to read. I was admitted into the University of Lagos, Nigeria, the session after Oyeli Shoroure completed his term as the President of the Students' Government of the school. In fact, stories of this person had preceded him before I finally got to meet him. The school had been shut down for a little more than a year because of his crusade against members of secret calls who had constituted themselves into menacing presidents on campus by their nefarious activities. Although this has become commonplace in Nigerian colleges, Shoroure took it on headlong in our college in order to read the campus of your first incoming presence. This ended in very untoward circumstances for him as was injected with unknown but highly lethal substances. This merely had elicited the school's closure and my entering class had to stay at home till the problem was resolved. Before this, he had been at the forefront of several activities of the Students' Government and the National Association of Nigerian Students in pressing for social justice as well as an improvement upon the decadent state of the Nigerian education system. And during the heavy days of the Nigerian military government, students found a major part of the dissenting call, writing articles, organizing strikes and demonstrations, and generally stoking the fires of unrest so as to register the people's disenchantment with the government. All through this period, his name was a constant feature in the dailies as Shoroure being the Students' Government President of Nigeria's most strategically located school was in the thick of all of this. Many of these activities put him at serious unquantifiable risk with him being on coalition path with the trigger-happy men of the Nigerian police as well as the most ferocious military men unleashed on Nigerian populace by the leaders who set out to steal any voices of dissent. It would be right to aver that many a time, Shoroure bought the stripes on behalf of the helpless Nigerian people. Four years on and I became elected as President of the Student Government he had so ably led. From old files and copies of several correspondences, I came to realize that his boldness and courage in the face of state-sponsored persecution was a veneer over a deep-rooted sense of responsibility to the office he held, a sharp intellect and an uncommon candor expressed in the most articulate fashion. In the course of my tenure of office, at the opening ceremony of the Nigerian University Games, this was back in 1998, while we were protesting on behalf of student activists who had been expelled from school for the political views they held, I was arrested alongside Shoroure, who had been there in his right as a former leader of the National Association of Students, who were incarcerated in the same police detention cell with the choicest of Nigeria's armed robbery suspects. In this small dingy cell, excuse me, that held as many as 130 detainees. One inobligably troubled expression in my memory were the words of the Assistant Retentant of Police as who were led to his office to see those who were out to embarrass the government. As he saw Shoroure, he lashed out. "Shoroure, you a gay?" It was that much of an issue in the draining struggle to ensure good and responsible government and secure the insurance of civil liberty for the wider populace. Being a serving president, pressures of students ensured my release two days later while Shoroure was held for two weeks before the government allowed him his freedom. Our acquaintance since then has transcended the political and has become a more devalued personal friend to my family. Students at a technical college near the University of Lagos named the Hall of Residence in his honor while he was still an undergraduate for his role in helping to reinstate student union activities on their campus. Such honors don't happen very often from one's contemporaries back home. I suppose that's not commonplace anywhere in the world either. As a former student president myself, I rarely have opinions of people in the tone as expressed in the following statement: "He probably has the most daring conviction I've known in the human being." Ladies and gentlemen, don't let them tell you he has no experience. Emmanuel Macron, I generally say France, sorry, Nigeria has a DDP of 1.2 trillion dollars. I ignore the second part of that statement. That was because I wanted you to say, banish that nonsense about experience. Macron became President for France of 1941. This gentleman, 47, so he hasn't been. He has run Sahara Report by himself. Destroying Nigeria's media space. Has a graduate postgraduate degree from Colombian University. Very reputable, respected, ugly university. Buhari, when it took over, I'm not telling you about that military unit. Buhari was 41, it was born in 1942, the first school was 1983. It was 41 years old. So this one is ready to be President of Nigeria. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the version next.
Thank you. Please take a seat. I've had the honor of being supported by some of the most brilliant former student union leaders from the Nigerian universities since I left. Fomile Oluwembe just gave a fantastic citation of myself, jealous of himself that I didn't even know about myself. The reason is that these guys are just very brilliant people and I want to let you know that he came out of the University of Lagos with a first-class degree, first class. A guy before him, who was one of our former student leaders, Macron Fabi, he also came out of the University of Lagos with a first-class degree, went to Cambridge to do a PhD without doing a master's. It was after he did his PhD I heard that he then decided on the side to do an MBA. The guy's working around with three degrees. And the reason I decided to mention this is not to make your head swell as we say in Nigeria, but just to keep wondering why from there. A country so blessed with this brilliant people is governed by dumb people. And that's where for me we should draw the line regarding 2019. That for the first time in the history of Nigeria, 58 years, we must make some very, very fundamental decisions. And one of it is that nobody who doesn't know what he's doing should govern even our classrooms. Someone in Nigeria you have to have. And not fit to be class captains. The school in our universities, or even some of them in our secondary schools. When they say I don't have experience, I just laugh at them. Because most of the guys who say so, there are two categories of people who claim I don't have experience. The people who have experience in stealing, assassination, manipulation, and organized crime in Nigeria, or brigandage. They are one category. They know that I have experience, but they throw it out there, or they throw it out at younger people, young Nigerians, who then repeat it even louder than they could ever do it. Reason is simple, a lot of young Nigerians have had their self-esteem smashed over the years, trampled upon, caged over the years, and they don't even believe that they have anything they can live for. I was lucky, and previously I would say, that I attended university and I had the right kind of connection to be on the right path very early in the game when I met Ferri Faradon, who by the way is turned 60 years old today. But Ferri Faradon, whatever he might be, I'm just saying happy birthday to you. And if you understand what they did to us when we were in university, then you understand what they are doing to every other person. The only difference was that we could resist how and control how we cried out. We could speak openly about how we were being oppressed. But the younger generation of today, the way they are destroying them is indirectly dumb. In our own case, the military will come after you. They will put a tank in front of the university. We will step up to the tank, in some cases we will disable the tanks and we will keep marching until we get to the government house. Until in some cases we have to confront battalions of soldiers, policemen, until we get shot, until we get detained. It is different at that time. But now, they are doing it remotely, they are destroying people's lives remotely. Mostly economically, sometimes culturally, sometimes politically. And you now have a bunch of young people who are zombies. So when they say to them, "You cannot, you know, in our own time, we aspire to be President of the nation." We thought it was possible and it's gonna come true next year by the way, yes. But now, a lot of young people, even when they have their PhDs, are aspiring to be drivers of dangote trucks. They are aspiring at best to become personal assistants to the wives of thieves who are now in political power. There are professors who are special advisors to the wives of governors who failed their classes when they were university professors. They are struggling to be advisors to criminals. The person who is the Deputy Governor of Akity, I heard is a PhD holder. I'm not sure. But the person who is the Governor of Akity, nobody can tell you where he graduated from. Are you ready for your shift? That's just the kind of country we have. And without analyzing and talking about this fundamentally, within the context of how we want to solve the problem, we can't just throw solutions out there. Because apart from the issue of experience, which they ask me, "You know, you don't have any experience." And when I tell them how over the last 30 years we have consistently fought to bring about what we have in Nigeria, they now say, "Well, that's not the kind of experience we want." And I say, "What else would I have done to make you believe that I'm better experienced than this guy?" I have seen seven presidents come and go in Nigeria. I have fought all of them persistently. Seven presidents, starting from Ibrahim Babangida, followed by Sunegar, if you want to count him as president, because he gets attention, you know. But as I just have him. And then Abacha came and Abdul Salam came. It was actually under Abdul Salam that I met Fomile at the University of Lagos when we went to fight at Noga. And when we were there, I just want to give you a brief history, where we were there. The Vice President of the Military Council at that time was Mike Ahibe. And Mike Ahibe was the one who represented the President at Noga Games. But the interesting thing was that Mike Ahibe was also a student at the University of Lagos. He was doing evening law. So when we eventually entered the Noga Arena where his game was playing now, I jacked the microphone from him and I said, "You cannot talk here. You are my student, you are used to be one of our students, you have to respect me." Of course he got upset, stood up with all his military might, came after me and before you know it, there was a bedlam. About 12 guns were pointed at me while I was sitting, while I was falling to the ground. At that time I was tinier than this, there was no reason to treat me that way. But they wanted to show force and power. Anyways, after Abubakar came Obasanjo. We drove Obasanjo away when he said he wanted to become Mokadi. Right, daughter? When he was leaving, he was so upset with Nigeria, he brought a man who had no kidney. No, he was not bad luck. It was Yedua. So, Yedua for the first time came and Nigeria had a president who was dead in a hospital for five months. But, you know, these guys are audacious. They went and signed a budget with his signature in Saudi Arabia, brought it back and signed an implementment in Nigeria. And we were shouting that this man is dead. At least, if anything at all, is not going to happen with experience. One thing I'm happy about is that if a dead man can run Nigeria for five months, I mean someone like me, who is all ears. Yedua was dead for five months, Nigeria was there. So after Yedua came Jonathan, but my experience with Jonathan was different. He was a minority person from the Niger Delta region. Nobody in Nigeria has ever had a minority in Nigeria before. Usually it's between Euroba Hausas and slightly Igbo's. We had to step out and defend Jonathan's rights to become the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. While we were fighting for Jonathan, everybody in the Nigerian National Assembly were working against Jonathan coming to power, including a young speaker at that time, Bam Kolik. They were having a good time taking care of themselves. And Jonathan came to power, then ran for election. But when he came to power, he sent somebody to come and see me. His name is Ero To Douglas, late now. And they said I should pack my things and come home, you know, I've helped them to come to power. And I asked them, "If I come home, what am I gonna come and do?" They, "Well, you know, whatever position you want." And I said to them, "The position I would have loved is the position the man is holding right now. So I'm not coming home." But on a serious note, they were ready to offer anything I wanted. I don't even have the temperament to sit in a cabinet which you have kissing up to you. If people are saying things that are not good or right, I'll tell you and I know one day you will prevent me from coming back into the presidential field. You fire me over the radio. I don't need the job. Anyways, Jonathan became president and we had expectations. Reason we had expectations was that Jonathan had a PhD. The only mistake we made was that we didn't ask for the thesis. If we had, probably would have found out that that PhD was fake. There's no doubt about the fact that. But Jonathan immediately embarked on the worst kind of governance and stealing that Nigeria probably had experienced before his time. He was lucky, man, they were selling a bine of oil over $100 throughout his tenure. If anybody had good luck, it was this man. Where by the way, he who came to power first time and won election to become a legitimate president. So, and after that, good luck did so bad that we forgot to ask for a wide result of the next candidate. The other time we didn't ask for thesis. This time around, they performed so bad that we forgot to ask for the wide result of the next man. And we are now at the point where we must draw the line. I'm taking liberty and time to say, tell you these stories because sometimes our biggest problem is institutional memory. Nigerians forget too quickly the way things happen. You know, it's because it happens so fast, even if you're a supercomputer, you can't recall how many bad things they do in Nigeria. They have mastered how to overwhelm us, manipulate us such that, you know, don't ever take it for granted that these guys don't know what they are doing. They might, they might look stupid on the outside, but they know what to do to keep you distracted, to keep you divided and to keep you a destitute in your own country mentally. This is something they are very, very good at doing. But the reason we are here today is different. The reason we are here today is to move in a different direction for Nigeria. And the reason I'm here in the diaspora are two parts. One, I have been around here for 19 years as well. I lived in Nigeria, came to the US exactly 19 years ago, February 1999, a few months before the 1999 elections. Because I could see glimmerantly that Nigeria wasn't going anywhere with kind of candidates that were coming out. And I stepped out for other reasons that I'll talk about in the future. And by next year, it will be 20 years since Sivuru came to be in Nigeria. And anytime any nation has a chance to restructure itself, they do it by decade, you know, decade after decade. Most development plans, stimulus plans are done on a decade-by-decade basis. And we are entering a decade in which we must head in a different direction for Nigeria. The other one is to actually appeal to you to understand that I know you don't want to be here. Yes, America is beautiful, right? There's the American dream, but there's also the American nightmare. Yes. And all of us are seeing it by covering our cells up inside. A lot of us are bleeding because this is not what we signed up for when we got the visa. And I know what I'm talking about and I know what you guys are struggling with, whatever it might be. And the way America is heading, they may become less and less tolerant of us. So we must start finding another boat, this is very necessary, where we can be at peace with ourselves, where we can see progress, where our DNA can live at peace with the weather, minimal. I'm, I will be the first to admit it that I undergo depression for six months. Whenever the weather is cold, I just get cold with cold weather. And each time I step into Nigeria, the pain is like, "There's something about Nigeria that makes me feel like, you know, this is home, right?" But of course, five minutes later, the customs officers want to make you go back on the plane. Yes, it's, it's the way it is. But you can imagine a country called Nigeria, the way it is now. No hurricane happening there anytime soon, except the one that's invented by human-made leaders. No tsunami has been observed there for a long time. Earthquake, none. Weather, when it's colder, it's probably 70 degrees. You know, when you feel cold and you're looking for a sweater, it's probably the one passed on by two uncles. Nobody buys a sweater because it doesn't get cold in Nigeria. When you own anything in Nigeria, it belongs to you. When you own something in America, it belongs to that man they call Uncle Sam. You can own a house in the US. You can own a house in the US, pay all your mortgage thirty years. The year you refuse to pay your tax, the house is taken away from you. You can own a car, no matter how beautiful it is, you paid it off. The day you can't afford insurance, you can't drive it. In Nigeria, I am not saying that it's a good day, but somehow we will survive. Because it's home. And when people are home, they are home. But when people are not at home, they are not at home. So I've come to invite you to let us go and build home once again. It's a necessary sacrifice. And the home we have to build, because I'm speaking in a different tone today, maybe it's because I'm in a church and a spirit has come upon me. The home we are going to build now is to prepare the place not only for Nigerians but for the black race. Yes. I don't know how many times you meet Nigeria, other Africans, and they tell you, "Why can't you guys get it right?" Because the destiny of black Africans is almost always tied to the development of Nigeria.
That's right, that's right.
And not putting Nigeria on the path of greatness that it should be, we are oppressing and depressing and detaining the progress of other African nations. Because they can't wait to use Nigeria to swear against their own poverty and their leaders as well. They say, "Look, we have Nigeria Toronto." Well, look at it today, Nigeria can't even defend Cameroonian activists who are fighting for Bia, the oldest, one of the oldest African dictators. And I said to you, who's an African who might be watching me on Facebook, if I, no, when I become the president of Nigeria, yes. The African media will be very turbulent. Because we'll make it clear that a lot of people need to retire. Allow, let's do what is said in the Bible, "Let my people go." Let my people go, and but we'll start that in Nigeria. Because a lot of Nigerians are also being kept in very dangerous places of detention, either physical or non-physical. And it's across the country, don't let anybody deceive you about ethnicity, it's rubbish. They use ethnicity to confuse you. I have just come back from Nigeria, I did twenty-three days, just traveling from the north to the east and south-south. And I came back to the west, went to a bar, you know. And the worst place you can find physical poverty is in northern Nigeria. I'm not afraid to say it because we are, we are about to tackle it. And I asked them, right there in Kano, in the, in the palace of the Ania, I said, "You know, you have to deal with unemployment every day here." You know why? Because the people who are supposed to have retired are the ones who are employed. Some Nigerian leaders are collecting both pensions and salaries at the same time. Yes, all the former governors in the Senate, including the Senate President, they receive pensions that they designed for themselves and also receive allowances. I don't mention salaries yet. And then they receive salaries, and then they receive what they call constituency projects. It's a port, you know, port of over there. It's unbelievable, whereas the young people in the country can find jobs. And they keep them not having jobs because when they want to use them for their dirty jobs, they want to make sure that they are very cheap to acquire. When the election period comes, all the young people that don't have jobs are very easy to recruit to become tops. They are very easy to recruit to become hired assassins. And they are very easy to recruit to do anything because they intentionally make sure they don't have jobs that can give them dignity. It's very difficult for somebody to come and meet you in the US and say, "You're going to kill somebody." Because when, if it's not your calling, you're not going to do it. But most importantly, you know that the police find you. You are going to be in trouble for a long time, right? But our country is not functioning in any direction. The legislative arms are just there looting. Nigerian senators are collecting thirteen point five million naira a month as allowance, not salary. Their salary is actually very small, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand naira per hour. And what people tell me is that the account that has the salary, they don't know it because they don't go near it. But the biggest one is that they have constituency allowance that's two hundred million per senator. Yes, that is, but not only do they do that, they also do what they call, uh, they go to the ministries, departments and agencies of government to go and carry out oversight functions. That's what they call it. That is the biggest extortion racket ever. They force the ministries to give them money. They ask the ministry to add bribe to their budget before they can pass it. That is what alarm makers do. The judiciary is not different. Judges are just collecting left, right and center to perfect the cost of justice. Our governors are not different. Governors are collecting what they call security votes. Some governors take security votes that are more than the salary of all the workers in the state per month. And they never miss it, but they don't pay workers' salaries. I am saying all these things not to rehearse the problems, but again, to refresh our memory. Because without being angry enough this time around, the revolution that we need through the ballot box will not happen. And if we miss it this time around, I don't know where we will get it again. Reason I'm saying it was that in nineteen ninety-nine, I was one of the people, after we fought for democracy for ten years, eighty-nine to ninety-nine, said, "There's no need for us to participate in the transition program. We have done our bit, it's time to go and relax." But what happened? The thieves who were hiding under their bed when we were fighting soldiers became the leaders of the country. And by twenty, by two thousand and three, when the likes of Ghanifah Emei and Farah came out to run for office, they were roundly defeated because the thieves had consolidated, they had hold on power to the extent that even the fifty thousand votes Ghanifah Emei got, they had to allocate it to him. Nigerians opened their eyes and saw between Ghanifah Emei and Obasanjo. Obasanjo can be described as a Barabas in the Bible. Yes, they decided to vote for Barabas and they asked that Ghanifah Emei should be discarded. And I hope that people have learned their lessons. The third thing we have asked, to come here to ask from you is your support. This time around, shamefully or shamelessly, we are asking for you to donate to our cause. The reason is simple. There are over six million Nigerians abroad. I think about three million of them would love to have a country they can call their own. Some of that three million, to be honest with you and to be fair to them, have mentally seceded from Nigeria. They don't want to have anything to do with Nigeria anymore. And they don't have any plans for Nigeria either now or in the nearest future. We want you to fund our campaign to the best of your abilities. And we know a lot of you are doing well enough here, a lot of you are struggling. But the sweat of the struggling people and the comfort of those who are comfortable can help us to raise two million dollars, that's what we're asking for, to go through this fight. Two million dollars is what politicians will refer to as moy moy in political palace in Nigeria. Moy moy is cake to beans. It's not, it's nothing to them, it's chicken change. But the reason why it will make a lot of difference to us is that our brand of politics is going to be very mean and compact. We are not distributing package rights. We are not doing what they call stomach infrastructure. Because the reason we are not doing stomach infrastructure is simple. We don't want people to come to us after we have won the election and we tell them that the infrastructure they are asking for is inside their stomach. We don't want that to happen. So, all we are asking for is for ten thousand Nigerians who are living outside to contribute two hundred dollars each to our, our efforts. And that will immediately give us, uh, two million dollars. And this is something that a Nigerian could give us, just one. People are doing well out here. But we also don't want somebody to just give us, because we want people to own the struggle by participation. And what are we going to do with two million? We are not buying too many things, we just want to make t-shirts, uh, we want to print posters. We want to be sending out strong messages to people that need to get it. We need, we are using, uh, social media a lot. And we've passed our social media to a large extent that nobody can drive us out of that arena. You know, but we know we cannot compete with them on NTA. But we are happy that NTA has died a natural death because of social media. Probably we are getting more views at this event than NTA can get. And there are nine PM news where they repeat the same nonsense that I've, they have not even changed the montage since I knew NTA in nineteen eighty-seven. This is a part of the problems we solve next year very quickly. So, this two million is good and powerful to do what exactly for Nigeria? This is a question that people are legitimately asking and you should ask. So what are you doing for Nigeria? What are we going to do for Nigeria beyond sending money, which we do very well regularly through Western Union and other means? Is that Nigeria is a space that is not complex. Nigeria is a space that is not big. If Nigeria were to be Texas, it would just be a little bit landmass more and you have Nigeria. The fact that people claim that Texas is bigger than Nigeria. Yeah, but as a geographer, you can ask me, Texas is just seventy-five percent of Nigeria. But that's something. You live here in Texas and you know that they run this place, you know? We've been in Dallas, the place is clean, right? You see roads and hills and bridges all over the place. But you know, the interesting thing, so many of those bridges, roads, sewage system, security, correctional, uh, places are being manned by Nigerians. Some of the greatest doctors you can meet. And they're Nigerians, accountants, people who are working at NASA, they're Nigerians. And again, unless you ask what is wrong with Nigeria? That they have such great citizens, but the people who are running the space called Nigeria, they are the enemies of Nigeria. And we have our worst citizens representing us at every level, the worst. Go and ask who is the governor of the state, someone will tell you that it's the worst man being, they've always, they've always known. Ask who is the chancellor of the place, they will tell you that he just killed somebody last year. No, it's true. You ask who is the chairman of the local government, they say, "I used to be in the kidnapper." Yes, it's the truth. You say, "Who is the senate president of Nigeria?" I say, "He used to be a bank robber." And it's true, Saraki actually destroyed a bank. So, say, I tell you, three banks, I'm the senate president of Nigeria. Yes! You ask who is the president of Nigeria? The same story. You ask who is the IG of police, you get all kinds of transmissions. Nigeria is in serious trouble. And it's not a laughing matter because our people who are in budget at home cannot laugh. You should ask yourself, what is the time now in Nigeria? It's nighttime, our people are in darkness. Babies have gone to bed tonight with no food in their belly. Little kids, and they have no electricity to do their homework, right? They have no fan to even keep the mosquitoes a little bit away. A lot of hospitals are there tonight, and people are sick, they can't even find hospital beds. I've seen people who were kept outside, are teaching hospitals in Nigeria mattresses that cannot be called mattresses. They have, the mattresses have become clay. This is the story of Nigeria. And I'm talking about right now, I'm not talking about yesterday. There are Nigerians who are refugees in their country and have been directly assisted by the United Nations, the same way they are assisting refugees in Syria, in Afghanistan, and other places, in Somalia. It's the same way they are turning to refugees in Nigeria's northeast. They call them internally displaced people. But that's even direct, what about people who are economically displaced people? That's almost seventy percent of our population. When they want to lie to you, they'll say that the inflation rate has dropped. And I'm asking, who told you? Because what is it that you produce that is inflated or not inflated? Which economy do you have? Who is the stiff statistician of the country, who is honest enough to tell you the true tale of inflation? You have a country that is the sixth largest producer of oil and its workers are some of the worst paid in the world. An average Nigerian worker receives forty-nine dollars per month. That is for a lot of you, two hours of work. And you can say, "Well, don't compare Nigeria to the US." Well, the Nigerian naira used to be stronger than the dollar before. So why not? But the problem is that we have not made a deliberate effort to change our destiny. And until we do that by effective collaboration, a dogged determination and bravery, a candle that's never been seen before, we will not get there. We won't get anywhere near other countries. I have been traveling around the world a bit and I have come to stop comparing Nigeria with anywhere in Europe or America. I'm now doing the comparison between Nigeria and Ghana. If Nigeria were to be like Ghana, so the most of you would have left the US to go back now. Yes, go and visit Akra, Ghana, come and see order. The best way to describe how bad things are at home is the international airports in Lagos. It has four toilets that I know of that are not functioning. If a nation cannot maintain four toilets, then the nation's name should be struck out of the united, the countries that are known by the United Nations. And that is where Nigeria is. But we have a chance through sheer intellect, a dogged understanding of problem and solving problems, to present one of our best. I am not the best, I will be first to say to you. I just happen to be one of the people who feel that I can really do it. And if anybody is not stepping up, I will step up and do it. And I will do it by confronting the old lazy men in the country who are running the country, who have brought it to the ground, and challenge them and wrestle them down and take back power for the good of Nigerians. And there's good news also, there are a lot of young people have also come out to challenge them. But I'm selling myself to you, not, I'm not selling the other young people. The reason is part of what Fumile said here. If you want to govern Nigeria and take it back from these old people, you cannot be a jelly. You know? There was a place near and Fumile were detained, just one night that was there. And I didn't like to repeat the story. They called the place SASS, as I, it's a detention for people who are accused of armed robbery. What it didn't say to you was that we were the only people who had not been shot inside the cell. And they were threatening to shoot us. Every night, they would come and pick people and take them out. And the prayer point inside the cell is that, "Let me not be the person they will pick tonight." That's the most important prayer. Because when they pick you out of the cell, you are not coming back. You just hear gunshot, gunshot sound, they killed you, they killed the person. We met a young guy in the cell who said to us, "Can you please save me?" I said, "What, what?" He said, "I'm not the person who is, who did the armed robbery, but I'm being held here to replace an armed robbery gang leader who is actively working on the outside for the police." So, yes, he's, he's, he's an innocent boy who is being, who is holding the place. Because when they... Because when they do the head count, they want to say, this is the person. But the guy who is the armed robber is a gang leader who is working for police officers. I've seen so many things, that's why I laugh at them when they say I have no experience. I say, Father, forgive them, but they did not know what they were saying. I've experienced Nigeria the way so many of them have never experienced it before. The only difference between me and them is that I have not experienced Nigeria on the compensatory side of it, on the incentivized side of it. If I was working in the civil service, I would be nearly retirement now because I've done this for thirty years. I will have five more years. When I went to Nigeria last year and one guy, uh I was attacked and taken to Panti and they were trying to frame me up. The guy who was supposed to interrogate me, the first question I asked him is that, when did you enter the police? He was looking at me, oh, you're trying to insult me, I'm not insulting you. Turns out that when I was teaching UNO president at the University of Weygo, he had not entered the Nigerian police force. They said, I'm not trying to act like your father, but I'm just telling you that I have better experience than you, even in the business of interrogation and answering questions. Because when he asked me two questions, my answers to him made me feel uncomfortable. That's a veteran right there. I was coming to Panti, I'm a regular person at Panti, not as a police officer, but as a detainee in the place. You don't know the place as much as I do. Yes. Because those days, when the policemen see me, they have a sign they use, they say, no do, no do, you doan, so say alarm blow. Because they're always warning me not to come back and that's what Fumile was saying. But on the serious truth, we have serious security issues to deal with at home. You've heard about Boko Haram, headsman, kidnappers, running riot. The current regime is incapable of solving the problem. When they came, they said they would wipe Boko Haram out. Three years later, Boko Haram is stronger than it used to be. We might as well open an office for Boko Haram in Abuja to have their representative as an ambassador. Because we are already allocating funds to Boko, we paid Boko Haram five million euros last year in ransom payments, just to get a few of the, uh some of the girls that are kidnapped. When they wanted to show that they are in control, they came back to another high school, picked up money and ten girls, when they finished the negotiation, they brought the girls back leisurely, even addressed the people in Da'chik, dropped the girls and went back. They were not in a hurry. That's where Nigeria is now with Boko Haram. You have heard about headsman, running riot from.
From Libya.
From Libya, yes, all the way to Eboni, right? You've heard about kidnappers. Kidnappers have become so useless, they are kidnapping people for recharge cards. That's how rampant kidnapping is in Nigeria. It's just all over the place. Well, can we solve the problem? Yes. How can we solve it? We have to overhaul our security system. You cannot have a commander in chief who asks the IG of police to go somewhere to run and the IG went to a party. Because it doesn't respect the commander in chief. We need a commander in chief who is in control first and foremost of his own faculties. Yes, before you can command the armed forces. And the man standing in front of you, we do that without blinking an eye.
Thank you.
Even as a civilian and a very good reporter for that matter, when I called them up and said, I'd like to talk to you about something you did wrong, they know that the commander is calling.
That's right.
Because they have to answer to those things. Our platform in the last three years, you know how many of them have really made uncomfortable some, some of them, we've taken them out completely. But that's not enough, we need to take the man to a leadership and start fixing our spiritual property. What about the most important thing that we need in Nigeria is power, electricity, my goodness. Without that thing, we are not going anywhere, nothing but that. Without flipping the lights on in Nigeria, we are not going anywhere.
Real talk.
Right? We have to turn on the lights in Nigeria to drive out the darkness from the place. That's a simple advice. And if we can get just electricity, right? Nigeria's economy will just by itself. Even economists will be wondering what happened, how come we don't understand this economic growth? Because the reason is that Nigerians are very innovative.
Yes, yes.
They already don't need governments to do anything for them. They are creating things every day. Shoe, the best shoe market in Africa is in Abba. Yes, shoes that are made in Abba, you can't, they will compete with that of Italy. But our mentally lazy leaders prefer to go to Italy to go and import shoes than to buy the ones in Abba because they don't even believe in the country. So electricity has to be tackled and we are bringing renewables into the country. With solar energy alone, we can generate four thousand five hundred megawatts of electricity in five years. We can start by putting them in our universities, five meg, you know, five megawatts each and they can power the environment within the university and the villages surrounding them. Maybe that's a good way to start. But how about we even use that as an economic boost? If you are here, instead of sending used cars to Nigeria, I want to sell solar panels because you can then sell the excess power to the government or even grid in your area. We're lighting up the place, one block and one street at a time. And before you know it, everywhere will be Christmas tree in our country. And that's framed ice water, and the people can be drinking them, right? We go from there to infrastructure. There's no reason why people should still be dying on our highways in Nigeria. But die, they die all the time. Nigeria is, is one country in the world, if a luxurious bus plunges into a lake, as nobody will try to rescue it, they just point to it, one luxurious bus just fell in that place. That's, that's how bad things are, that's how bad our roads are. But what can we do? We can provide four hundred kilometers of highways around Nigeria. The interstate highway system, we can at least borrow that one from here, since we plagiarize the American constitution anyways, a system of government and democracy. And it's hard to do a carriageway go round Nigeria, like they had the I ninety-five from the east coast to the west coast. And Nigeria is not big, like you say, it's not complex. The entire landmass in Nigeria is, you know, you can fly from one part of Nigeria to the other, the four days in more, less than two hours. The U S, you can be flying for six hours, you haven't arrived at your final location. But there is highway connecting everywhere. The rail system is here. It may not be perfect, I'm actually not a big fan of U S rail system, it's in a way outdated, but I'm not running for president of the U S, that's a problem. Yeah. But look at what they're doing already in Morocco, they have high-speed trains. It's coming to the U S.
Yes.
Yes. They should have been here years ago. We need that in our country, we will get it in Nigeria first before you get it in the U S. When are we getting it?
Thank you. Back. Back.
Yes. So infrastructure means that we turn Nigeria into a construction site. And what does that do for Nigeria? Employment for the teenage youth. We are also not just going to employ people, we have made it very clear that an average civil servant in Nigeria should be paid not a minimum wage, which is legal wage in the books, but a living wage. And we'll start from hundred thousand Naira. Period. Of course, people challenge us all the time, it's going to cause inflation, say, lie. When you increase the purchasing power of workers, you don't cause inflation, you create employment, you create small businesses. I make a very simple analysis of if I'm a civil servant and I used to take my shoes to uh shoemakers to repair every month, when I get hundred thousand, which is a boost from what used to be eighteen thousand, I will order for two shoes. The man in Abba is now under pressure to be producing more shoes for civil servants who are now the new wealthy people in town. And the man, in an attempt to cope with the demand, will now have to increase supply by employing new people in his factory. Whether he likes it or not, he may even call them apprentices, that's no problem, but somehow you must compensate that person. And in Nigeria, each time you compensate one person adequately, you are affecting ten people. You guys know we do that all the time. You send money to one person, before you know it, ten other persons are attacking you and sending you prayers because they heard that you sent two hundred dollars to my mom, my mom somehow gave them two hundred Naira from you. And now they want to get the two hundred dollars directly from you, that's another issue. But the next thing is of course our economy. Our economy is not working for the Nigerian people. In fact, the people of Texas are doing better with Nigerian economy than the people of Nigeria. Why? Because a lot of our oil and gas wealth come to this place. The guys who go from here to work in Nigeria as oil and gas exporters, they are living large in Texas, particularly Houston. And I'm not lying, it's the truth. But the people of Nigeria, that where the resources taking out of, they, what they get is broken environment, you know, terrible economic uh conditions and the unleashing of the military and the police on them each time they protest to get a little bit of, I mean, Ken Saruwa was sacrificed to oil companies just to appease them. When I graduated from Columbia University in two thousand and three, two graduates like myself approached me and when they approached me, they asked me to advise them how to conduct themselves when they go to Nigeria. And I said, why do you need me to give you advice? They said, we just got a job from Shell. Shell was paying them fifty thousand dollars, I mean, the sign-on bonus. The best job I got, I'm from the Nigeria Delta Region too, that's where I was born, the best job I got was a thirty-five thousand dollars job at a Catholic charity. The people who are going to my country got more money than I have, I'm getting in a year in one sign-on bonus. Nigerian economy is not working for, it's not made for Nigerian people. Our president came the other day to meet with the president of the U S and you saw how Trump was very happy in that pose. Reason was simple, Trump scored a bull eye, I mean, a bull's eye with the Nigerian president. He got the chance to be exporting more agricultural products to Nigeria. Whereas it's Nigerian people that needs to be exporting their own agricultural products to the U S. But at best, the things they allow to even come here, they don't allow Nigerian ones to come. If you are buying yarn in an African market, it's likely not from Nigeria, it's from Ghana. Yes. If you are buying snail, it's from Ivory Coast, it's not from Nigeria because they don't even trust Nigeria enough to allow us to export anything directly to. So most Nigerian farmers who grow yarn have to take it to Ghana first to bring it to the U S. But it's because we have not created an economic model that works for our people. Our economic models are dictated from here through the World Bank and the IMF. And we can change that. I say it with due authority and without scaring anybody, that an IMF country director cannot tell me how to run my economy. I will ask you, how come you don't want to take your experience to New Orleans? They need IMF there too. I will show to him all the poor cities in America where they need to go and put their economic model. Because the economic model is meant to prepare our economy for their imports. It doesn't respect our ability to grow internally even first. In fact, the economic model discourages any form of subsidization of the life of the poor. They want to take over your roads and put roads there, they want to take over your water system and sell it back to you, they want to take over everything. So Africa right now is a mining site for them. And this was what was designed during the colonial and post-colonial era. And someone who is going to be the president of Nigeria can lead the charge to make it very clear that Africa is no longer a satellite continent to other continents. I heard that the president of Ghana spoke eloquently about some of these things, but I still feel that he's speaking tongue in cheek. This is the essence of the exposure that we have, that the people have come down, and I'm not in any way denigrating people who didn't get the chance to get a visa to come out. So for a lot of us, it's luck, privilege, uh you know, we now know better. But we must go back and fix our economy and make the economy work for the Nigerian people. Do you know that when you ask them, how's the economy doing, they will show you their foreign reserve? And I said today, I'm glad you call it foreign reserve. You want to ask America, where is the foreign reserve? Have you ever heard about American foreign reserve before? Because all American reserves is here, inside America. They don't take their money and put it in the Bank of England and using it to judge how they are growing. When since your students are going hungry in your country and you are pointing to foreign reserve in the Bank of England or J P Morgan, doesn't make sense? But that's how the world works. But it can work for you if you know how to stand your ground. And the exposure that we have, there's the degrees that we have obtained, which is the same degrees that the guys who are working at IMF obtained, can help us leverage the conversation when we meet eye to eye, we do that already. Another thing is restructuring, I know a lot of people in Nigeria shouting, restructuring, we should restructure the country and we believe that as well. We understand that Nigeria crying for restructuring is also part of the protest against the way things are going on. In the southeast, for example, where people are asking to secede from Nigeria, it's not as if it is their best preference. But in Nigeria, they don't allow you to operate freely as you want. In Nigeria, that you cannot live on one path and be free, it's not in Nigeria that's working for you. So when people are saying they want to secede, they're just saying they are tired of the way Nigeria is structured right now. It is easier for us, those who are strangers, when I call us strangers here, immigrants to America, to move from one part of America and live on the other side. If I want to live in Dallas today from New York or New Jersey where I live, I don't have to tell anybody, I can just put all my things and ask it to be transported down here, take it on a plane and book a house, apartment online or calling and I can move. You can't do that in Nigeria. If you move from Lagos to Kano, somebody will ask you, what are you doing around? Because the country is fiber, is strong apart. We just have, we don't have a country, we just have a mass of cleavages, things that are just put together. And the reason is simple, is that there's lack of social justice in the system. There's no country that can be more diverse than America. Every household is represented in New York, not even countries. But we don't, we're still outside around with guns, everybody say, are you Italian, you're shooting Nigerian? It's not since some of those things don't happen, but it's not doing that. Because when you walk first and foremost in the U S, by Friday, if you're collecting weekly, you get your cheque. And that's very important. If it's two weekly, you know, by weekly, you get your cheque and you can now live your life at least the way you like. Yes. And the last thing on your mind when you get your cheque is where you come from. Well, it would be from Nigeria because the guy who sent Western Union. But at least that kind of economic belonging to the society here doesn't make you feel bad about it. There are even Nigerians who love political parties that you don't think they can love in the U S, they belong there. You know, more Nigerians, probably of all immigrants, who donated more money to the Obama campaign than probably even other, you know, uh people, other immigrant groups in the country. Because that's how we are, Nigerians are free-minded people. And how do you know it if you go and play soccer against a Nigerian team inside Nigeria and the outside team is defeating the Nigerian team? Nigerians will be supporting the team that's from outside defeating their own local team. That's how fair and free-minded we are. Nigerians' soccer clubs are not based in Nigeria, they are based in the UK. That's how free-minded we are, we are top soccer clubs from other countries, sometimes we kill ourselves. That's how free-minded we are, we are top soccer clubs from other countries, sometimes we kill ourselves over it. That should count for something on the fact that if the objective conditions are there, we can live together peacefully, regardless of our ethnic differences, right? But we can't now because whatever is holding us together is very easy to tear apart because there's tension everywhere, there's injustice everywhere. And like I said somewhere, when I entered the university and I left the university, I left, I entered the university the same way I met Nigeria and worse than I met Nigeria when I left the university. When I went to the University of Lagos, we still had water running in the hostels. The toilets were still working. By then we were leaving, we didn't have any toilets anymore. The universities today in Nigeria are celebrating ball hole as achievements. They are sending us, by the way, a good commission electric pool as achievements. So, we would need to restructure the country, but the restructuring that must happen first is economic, in my view, and empowerment of the people, so that they can sit down and even determine for themselves the kind of future they want. What I've tried to tell you by way of analogy, a quick story, is what we want to bring to Nigeria. It's about an eleven-point that keeps growing, that we call Spicer Hits. Security, rights, power, infrastructure, anti-corruption, which I talked a lot about. Economy, restructuring, a hit aspect of it is health, education, agriculture and technology. And there's another T, which is tourism. With competent leadership in the country, attacking all of this simultaneously, you are about to see a Nigeria that you can conveniently call El Dorado. Thank you! And that's what we're about to do, and that's what we must do. We've taken our message to every local and county of Nigeria. Well, not everywhere yet, but representatively, every local and county of Nigeria. We've been traveling all over the world, and people ask us, "Why did you go and talk to Nigerians abroad?" Reason is that you are the biggest foreign investors into the country. With fifty billion dollars sent home, officially now. I know you guys Nigerians, when you want to send big money, really big money, you don't send it through Western Union. You go to the airport and wait for somebody who is heading to Nigeria. The ten, ten thousand goes home that way. So if you add that up, that's another probably twenty billion right there. Well, guess what? You don't even expect any return on your investment, that's how you are different. You just want a country that's working. I'm sure like myself, every one of you, it still happens to me today. If I see a highway that has just been built, I'm like, "Can I just carry this thing to Nigeria?" In my head, I already know where I want the highway to be. You know, we went to Canada the other day and I went in a motor trail, and we saw highway, you know, I'm like, "Wow, man, this one can be in Bodija area of Ibadan", you know, right there in my head, you know, I know the ones that should be in Kaduna, I've seen some in Dallas that I think should be in Kaduna, I've seen some that I think should be in Onisha, you know. And the reason is that we are constantly just thinking about how home can work. We're not thinking about it because of wishful thinking, because we know it can work. Because we, as people, have participated in places where this is work. Lagos Ibadan Highway has been under repair for twenty years. We went to Onisha. The traffic in Onisha was caused by, you know, a pothole. It wasn't even caused by a sheet hole, it was a pothole, the accosting. That's what caused the traffic, and I've said to myself, "This is something we can do in two hours, why should they be causing a gridlock?" And by the way, why should the southeast still be connected with one bridge? And the most you need to connect the bridge between the southeast and the rest of Nigeria is probably maximum three kilometers. By now, we should be talking about cargo trains, fast trains connecting Portacot with Lagos. But these lazy leaders, if they manage to construct five kilometers of roads in three years, they will still not wear a badha and bow there and say that they are commissioning it. The commissioning itself will got more money than the cost of constructing the road. Because there will be a contractor who has to design the commissioning of the event. And, we could just stay here and be talking and talking forever. But I've reached the point where we're also starting to taking solutions to the problem. And that is the essence of these engagements that you see that we are doing with Nigerians across the world. It's not only here, we are doing it in Nigeria as well. Dallas is our last leg in the US on this trip. We're heading back to Nigeria, starting from tomorrow, and we are going to be in... We are going to be in cities across Nigeria. And I have to say to you, before you ask me, "People have concerns about my security in Nigeria?" Yes, and you should be concerned. But you should also be concerned about the security of the one hundred and ninety-eight million people who are trapped in the country. It's not, it's not the greatest speciality. Listen, there's nothing that can happen to me that is worse than what is happening to an unborn baby as we speak tonight. Or a woman that is about to deliver a baby and doesn't know how to be possible. Because she went to the hospital where the doctor is demanding for money before they touch her. There are no social safety nets anywhere, so nobody is safe in Nigeria. And as long as there's nobody that is safe in Nigeria, even those of us who are here, we are not safe. The reason we are not safe is that physically, if you go home, anything can happen to you. If you don't go home, mentally, you are under siege from the socio-economic conditions of our people. And we cannot keep conditioning ourselves to believing that everything will be alright, everything will be alright. We're heading to church and mosque every day. But those of you who are here at this, they don't even realize that your prayer points are different from the people at home. When you come to church, you don't come here to come and pray that God should give you transformer. No! But people are still doing those kind of prayer points, they'll go to the front of the church and say, "Please Pastor, let us pray that we get the transformer we have been waiting for for twenty-four months." And people will be there shaking their heads, "Jesus, Jesus, give us transformer, give us transformer." God cannot be servicing transformers. The truth is that, in most cases, the prayers of Nigerians have been answered.
That's right!
But we have refused to get off our knees. That's the problem. And on that note, I will wrap up and take your questions.
Young will be seated. Before we go further, I want to thank you so much for that marvelous speech that you gave. I want to ask us all this evening, if anyone has a problem with his experience to be our next president in two thousand and nineteen.
No!
As a answer, I'd say from you all, so we look forward to two thousand and nineteen to install a person that knows or that has the solution to many of Nigeria's problems. It will take you and I to get that accomplished. The truth is that we can vote, but we have people on ground who are suffering some of these things, and we have control over the cost of the money that you send home every day. I will say that, I want to recognize the Oshusti's governorship candidate, Mr. Kode Upoala, may he please stand up. The governorship candidate for Oshusti.
He left a few minutes ago, he's having an appointment somewhere else, so he left here a few minutes ago.
That's fine, thank you. Also, I want us to tighten the house up. Like I asked earlier, that everybody in the back should please move to the forward. We want the first three seats to be occupied because we are on Facebook Live. So we want the house to look tight. Just give yourself a promotion and come to the front. And those also standing should please get a place to sit down. If you are standing, please get a place to sit down. Look, I'm ready though. Thank you so much, thank you so much for your patience. I also want to recognize Daniel Tanguke from Cameroon, this analyst. He's a professor and has helped us a lot in organizing this event, thank you for coming. And now, we'll go into questions and answers. No, we'll go to questions and answers, and please, those on Facebook Live that have a question that they need to ask, please type your question and we will give those questions, we'll answer those questions for you today. He's going to assist me. Everybody that has a question should have a number, a ticket. When your ticket is being called, the ticket number is being called, then you will come out here to read your question. Are we, is that clear? Okay, and I will start on with the first question. Sir, you have spoken about security in Nigeria. You seem to understand what the problems are. You also have spoken how Nigerians are a cell in this country, and how they can be very valuable in Nigeria. And most people are not looking forward to go to Nigeria right now because of the security situation. And there's no way Nigeria can even make any growth without foreign investors coming into the country. And why most foreign investors have not taken interest in Nigeria is because of the security problem. How do you plan to solve this problem?
Thank you, it's a great question. I will just point you to two countries that have done something similar to what they are doing, India. India, in the last ten years, attracted its best brains home. They brought, they created cities for their doctors, their Silicon Valley brains, best brains, and they all came home. As a result, today Nigeria is spending two point five billion dollars in medical tourism in India. That's where we go to now, to solve our medical problems. In fact, there are people who will travel from the US to go to India to go and solve medical problems. And what did they do? They used to create a new environment for people to come back home. You see, part of our problem is not that we don't have security men who don't have to do their job. As a matter of fact, when Nigerian policemen go to United Nations to perform UN duties, they get awards. Good awards, but when they get home, they are not allowed to do policing work. An average Nigerian governor has over two hundred policemen attached to him, a Nigerian governor. They also have head of some rich men in Nigeria who have over fifty policemen attached to their daughters. You must have seen on Facebook, policemen carrying bags for people, carrying umbrellas for people. Our policemen are deployed in the wrong places, so they are no longer doing policing work. In addition to the fact that they don't have the right equipment, they don't have the right training, you now have a situation where the country is just running wild. What we do is to withdraw all the policemen first and foremost that are guarding all these VIPs. Put them back to work within the society, train them properly, equip them properly, pay them properly. Because you cannot have policemen who are underpaid protecting anybody. In fact, it is dangerous to harm anybody who is not properly remunerated. This is a well-known fact all over the world. You have to pay them in a way that makes them feel like they have to do their duties. And of course, you have to put your government in place that can make sure that order is achieved within the military. For example, an unknown secret within the Nigerian army is that there are only five thousand officers in the army who are controlling almost about hundred thousand soldiers. Reason they don't allow officers is, it happened during the military, they don't want them to plan coup against their bosses. So they have a limited number of officers that they can monitor. It's just selfish, you know, issues within the security system. Beyond that, all of you know that corruption is killing our security services. You found generals the other day, if some of them, they found millions of dollars, this is not naira now, in the overhead water tanks that they residence. Some were found in the sewage, some, you know, as Fela would say, under cooking pots, under the... That's why nobody can tell me that Nigeria don't have money, there's money everywhere. But the money is just not being applied to what should be applied. As I love to say, Nigeria as it is designed right now is working for the greedy. We must move it to start working for the needy. Thank you so much. Thank you!
Now I'm going to call three people to come up here and ask their questions. We're going to do three by four, and I'm going to ask my young men here, please call those three numbers.
The first three numbers I have here, three-three-eight-four-nine-four. If you have that number. Next one is three-three-eight-four-nine-two. If I call your number, please come forward to ask a question, thank you.
Thank you all. And remember, when we first started, some of you weren't here. Let's be respectful with our questions, and there won't be any arguing back and forth. That will only fetch that person a good flight out of this place, thank you.
My name is Wanda Ikhonge, and I'm from Oshusti, Nigeria. My question is this, I know we just talked about the security situation, but I'm, you know, kind of delving more towards the police. Now, we know our policing is done in the western world, especially in places like America. We know that we have state policing and all of that. So my question to you is this, what do you think about state policing as opposed to the kind of policing that we currently have in Nigeria right now? Do you support state policing in Nigeria?
I support state policing, and the reason is simple. Not only do I support state policing, I support even local government policing. In fact, if you go to Nigeria today, every state has got their own security outfits that is different from that of the federal government. They're just informal groups. We just can't keep having a burdensome federal system. State policing does a lot of things, you know, people who are at city level understand state problems. There are state laws that don't need to be implemented by federal...
There are state laws that don't need to be implemented by federal police. It's part of the reason why the federal police is over stretched. You see policemen in places like Lagos chasing after buses instead of doing serious police work. Now, those are state responsibilities that the state police can carry out. And states have regulations where their policemen can be more effective. Of course, what you have to worry about is the state governors paying the policemen. That's what you worry because then if you now have more people with weapons roaming around who have not been paid salaries, you have armed robbers, you know, in your hands. But I support it and I support it and I believe it's part of what we should do as a restructuring of the country. Whatever it takes to make it happen, we'll do it with the oversight approach from the federal police, which is what happens in America, which are violations of human rights. The FBI can come and investigate any police department in the US.
I want to have the two other people ask their question at one time and then you respond to that.
Okay. Um, my name is Kenji, I'm from Omo State. Um, I believe the question I'm about to ask is the same question as I asked so many people on your mind. Because right now, I don't know if you know, 2019 is being very red with under eight PVC and everything. So my question is, you told us the things you're going to do, but what's your strategy? And are you hoping to form an alliance with people that have the same values? You know, like all the politicians like Afellato to...
Drutoye.
Drutoye and people like that. Are you hoping to form an allegiance? Because I'm very, very realistic person and we need to come up with a more realistic world, making sure we really, really take it back.
Hi, my name is Alakay Luca, I'm from Enugu State. I want to give a suggestion, then I will ask my question. So now that the royal wedding just happened and we were fortunate to have a mixed race person, a lady who has done a lot in Africa. I'm hoping that for you to bring out your popularity and help Nigerians out because Prince Harry is a love guy in Africa a lot. I'm suggesting that if you could get some time with them, bring them to talk to us, talk here in Nigeria, that would really boost you up because we know you are here to help bring Nigeria to the new age because the new age is where we are. Uh, that's my suggestion and I'm hoping you think about it. Because wherever Harry is, people come. Wherever his wife is, who's a princess, people come. And Zuckerberg has come to Nigeria, so you know we have so much respect for the youth in Nigeria. Okay, that's my suggestion, so I hope you think about it. Now, um, I wanted to ask kind of two questions. Have you thought about who... Okay, 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 okay. Yeah, okay. So for VIP, VP, I'm sorry, who have you chosen to be your VP? The reason why I'm asking is because, uh, just like you know, all of us are from different states and different tribes. And I know that having a VP that could relate to another side of Nigeria would really help. So have you chosen anyone for your VP? And, you know, if you could tell us a little bit more on your plan based on that, that's my question.
Thank you. Um, I need you guys to have a seat. I have to. So the first question is about rigging of the election in advance. I know what you're talking about. There's been a case of underage voters who have found in the registers of Kano State and some states. We're reporting a lot about that. Well, here is the truth. There are 36 states in Nigeria and each of the states have eligible voters. Some of them have collected their PVCs. It's important to, a lot of people by the way have come to collect their PVCs and some have not. And some who have registered have registered fraudulently. But one thing is clear, regardless of who you bring to vote on election date, you cannot rig more than the number of people in your state. That's impossible. So if you have 1 million voters in one place, you can only present 1 million votes from that state. So on a state-by-state level, what I advise people is who gets your PVC first? Because if you look at some map of states that have not received or collected their PVCs, they are mostly based in the south. You know, and a lot of people who are middle class, people like me, and I don't even register to vote, but they allow, they complain when bad people are elected to govern them. So this is the time to do it. On the level of the PVC, uh, I don't work with Harry reporters as frequently as I used to. But before, uh, I started this journey, there are not a lot of studios that I told that I guess to keep monitoring. There's going to be a report out, which was forced, which will be forced out from INE because Harry Potter has kept pushing on that issue. And it's going to detail how to resolve the under voting, uh, I mean, the underage voters scam that is going on. So we keep monitoring that, but I would use this opportunity to urge those of you who have families back home, ask them to go and get their PVC. And you can tie that to Western Union remittance next time. Anytime they ask you for money, ask them to send you a copy of their PVC as a condition for sending money. It will work wonders. Uh, collaboration with other candidates, we are very open to collaboration. Uh, but they have to understand that we don't have the time to go and be sitting in meetings when we need to be mobilizing people. You know, we have a lot of fantastic candidates. I heard some of them speak very well. But I'm, like I said at the beginning, I'm selling my own agenda to you. I don't know the agenda, so don't mess with you. I've heard them speak, I've not seen any one of them saying how to tackle security. I've heard Moga Lu said he will hire more policemen, brilliant, you know. But mine is very holistic and my image is also very holistic. And I'm engaging with a lot of people at the same time. I do rallies in Kano, I do it in Away, I did it in Benin, I went to Onichah. So I want to challenge them also not to sit somewhere in a Kohi Lagos or be attending only air-conditioned conferences. Let them step out and mobilize and move the grassroots. Let us all be moving. In fact, I'd love to see some of them attend the same town hall meetings with me. I'm willing to arrange it so that we can all bring ideas. You get a chance to choose who among the brightest guys should lead. But I'm not saying that from them. They're just hoping that people will come and align with them. The alignment with need is not between candidates, it's between the candidates and the voters. And that's what I'm out to do. I'm pushing people to get out to vote. And finally, to let you know, you can actually go home and get the PVC and go and vote also in the election. That's right, yes. You can spend your next vacation in Nigeria in February. And after then, it will be easy to be going on vacation when you get elected a job. People who know what they are doing. And you would then never use Nigeria to be threatening your children when they disbehave. You know what I'm talking about. I'll send you to Nigeria, I said, "Mommy, please." Never do that again. Uh, the suggestion is to bring the royal family to Nigeria. Honestly, I didn't watch the royal, I didn't have time for it. And, uh, yeah, it would be great to create in Nigeria where the royal family will come to us. I suppose, we have been going to them for too long. You know, we want to reverse. The royal family is not, the royal family in the UK is not more royal than the royal family in Kano and in...
In Benin.
In Benin. In fact, the best royal family is used to really believe. Have you ever heard about the over the vice, Owarames? We have very beautiful royal family people also.
Thank you.
And they have like, we have great culture, by the way. And what we saw yesterday is culture imposed on the rest of the world. We can also, if we do what we need to do in our country, the world will be watching when we have our own weddings too. The same way they are watching our movies today. They said, "I love Nigerian movies." But it is time to start loving Nigeria, where the Nigerian movies come from. So we invite them over when we come to, they can come and work with us. Ask to see a mutually respectable conversation. We are thankful for that. Um, you say, "Who have you chosen to be your VP?" We have not chosen a VP yet. You know, the work we are doing now is such that it is also a human resource head hunting process. While we are going about talking to Nigerians, we're engaging with people. We're checking out people, bringing background checks to be sure that we find the best VP. Uh, and it will be another Nigerian who is competent. Because what we want to demolish by the better of this revolutionary process is the tongue-by-tongue system in Nigeria, what they call zoning.
Yes, sir!
Yes, that zones important areas of the land to the competent people of the land. We want to change that so that any Nigerian that is qualified to be president or vice president is chosen based on his competence. Not his religion or his ethnicity. And if it is a zone-by-zone thing, I have told them, we have created, Nigeria has six geopolitical zones. We have now created zones of several. Of the disenfratized, the unhappy, the disunited, the cheated. It is our turn.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to call the next, uh, three persons to answer, to ask their questions. But please, time is now a factor, so everyone have a minute to ask that question.
The next three numbers are 338499, 338489, 338715. If you are in position of that, you can please come to the front and ask questions.
As the, as the guy ready to ask that question, uh, as a follow-up to the question that our young man asked you earlier, what he was trying to advise us, how would you get your name asked there in Nigeria? Because there are so many people, even me standing here, I know Sarah reports. I'd rather not go read that every evening, but I don't know the brain behind it. And I know there are so many people like me out in Nigeria that doesn't know that. It's a follow-up question. Then also, uh, what platform do you plan to run as the president of Nigeria?
All right, my name is Wale Tosen, I'm from Lagos. My parents are Yoruba from Ibadon. I grew up in Kano, so I understand the aspect of them recruiting and not sending the unpopulated ones to school so in that case they can control the alimony and deploy them. Because when I was in Kano in 97 to 2000, I literally had to tell my younger brother that, you know what? If they say God is a merciful God and these people come and kill us, we are going to die and they will repent tomorrow and become. So I had to tell my younger brother, "Let's start taking them to school so we can defend ourselves." We lived in Brigade, which is the central area. My parents were missionary race. And fortunately enough, after I left Nigeria, the missionary house we stayed was burned down. So we kind of saved, we're lucky about that. Well, I'm looking at the poor folks in Nigeria and especially those ones that don't get good justice. I was hoping you would employ the system we have here in America whereby the police stations do have court systems that would also be an aspect of creating jobs for the lawyers out there. So would you mind doing something like that whereby each police station can have a court system there whereby everyone can get a fair system of...
Okay, my name is, um, Kemi Fawwaini, I'm Kenyobola and I'm from Odo State. Um, my question is, first of all, I would like to say that I'm really privileged to be here today knowing that, I mean, you follow one of some of the legacies of late Chief Ghanfawwaini. And my question goes like, um, what are the measures or plans you will put in place to cover the endurance of the House of Assembly in order for you to carry out your plans to move Nigeria forward?
President.
My name is Chris Wallen, you know me. And I have a question and just a suggestion. I spoke with some of your comrades, spoke with Larry Legacy, the major and the rest of them. And I said, "Since you're the one, I don't do politics, but I would support you. I love your movement. You've started this already and we are, I'm going to be engaged in this. I'm going to follow this movement. Wherever we are, I've started talking to a lot of comrades in and out of Nigeria." And I said, "I was talking to the major when you guys were in UK and Canada and I said, "As you were, President is still doing some good work. What you did in the University of Lagos back then, people will not know. When you left, it was worse. I'm talking about courtesies, you know what I'm talking about." And the same thing with Larry Legacy in Ife and the five of them, you know, there was a strong body there. What you've done, you've set a legacy, like I always said. And we're going to follow you because we know you manage the war. But one thing I wanted to say is, I was talking to the major and your king, whatever, whatever, to take all the people that are doing bad in Nigeria. Yoruba used to say that, "Meaning, like, your hand is not strong enough to hold a complex, but you want to take revenge on the people that killed your father. Those people will not make it to the death." So what I'm trying to say, so suggestion is, if there's a way we can work with these people for right now, because Nigeria is so corrupt that you cannot dig all these people out right now. But if we can work with them a little bit, when we get them, we'll flood them out one after the other. How are you going to be able to do this so that we will be able to work with those in power? The rest of them, we'll talk later, President.
Take it!
The first question was about the courthouse and police stations as a means of dispensing justice. These things are not new. In Lagos, they even have mobile courts that work, uh, they work overnight. What has happened to our judicial system, our court system is that they've been devoid of justice. The people who get jailed by the mobile courts are poor people, poor people. The Nigerian government has followed us here.
Take it! Take it!
So, but honestly, I, this year, I was talking to junior lawyers in Lagos. They have invited me to their conference in Lagos. And the issue of what they will be doing came up too. They asked, you know, "How are we going to get jobs?" And I told them, "There's going to be a lot of prosecutions..."
That's right!
"...to be done, yes, uh, at every level." And some of the prosecution that needs to be done are the ones that will free poor people out of prison. A lot of people are thrown into prison, you know, they are under, they are waiting trial for years because, you know, her parents are rich enough to bail them out. There is nothing we can do about them, you know, so... And that ties to the question of suggestion given by our comrade. You know, that maybe we should be a little bit careful what we say about what we do to the people that ruined Nigeria. I think what we have done over the years is been too careful about the consequences of their action. And that is what emboldened them to put us in the condition that we are in today. What other countries do around the world, including here, is that they spell out punishment for conduct that are mimicker to, you know, uh, public interests. It goes not only at the local level, it's even international. There's an international criminal court that deals with people who have violated rights of their own people. Regardless of whether they are president of the country or they have immunity. It depends on the gravity of the crimes you have committed. In Nigeria, we keep preparing over these cracks that, you know, don't let us, don't let us offend them all. Because the thing is, if a young person like me who has fought there for 10 years or 20 years or 30 years is coming out, they know my intentions already.
Yes, sir!
Yes, whether I talk about it or I don't talk about it, I better let you know my intentions rather than let them keep my intentions to themselves.
Straight up!
They know where I stand on corruption, that we would collect whatever they have taken from us. They know, if I don't tell you, it doesn't matter, they know me. So I'm telling you so that we know you are not in doubt about what I will be doing or what I'm capable of doing. I would always bring you, I would always bring you as an example of a person that if he had not set his mind, they would have... that if he had not set his mind, they would have allowed it. No, it was not true. They knew Awolowo's mind from his pronouncements, from his conduct, from the books he had written. So whether he campaigned saying that he would do something or not, it didn't matter. They had already jailed Awolowo and brought, he had come out of jail. He had worked with them as a federal minister or vice president of the military council at that time. So they know what he's capable of doing. Someone like me who has been around for thirty years, they have a dossier on me that is taller than me. And they just need to go to the page of, you know, or the charter called intentions. When they read it, they know that my intentions had been formed a long time. So I'm not out here trying to play politics with people's mind by saying, oh, I'm going to call a meeting of other statesmen to be coming to the, or that will give more awards to the barbaric leaders of this world, will give chief fancy title to Chief Olusegun Bassonjo, he will become a double chief. No! We are creating a new country for people who have been cheated over the years. We cannot promise people who are cheating them a prominent place in the future. No, it is just like you look at what happened to the Israelites when they were about to leave Egypt. You might as well have asked Moses to go and show Pharaoh that after they, you know, after they become free, they will still be coming and giving them taxes so that he will let them go. It's, you know, and I'm saying that because we are the church, we can have some conversations, you know. Like these days, you know, I do assist, I associate pastor work too in addition to campaigning so that we can, we can reach the heart of our people where it matters most. So, comrade, I understand what you say, I understand the anxiety, but there's nothing to be anxious about. And I say this because if my ideas are strong enough, even when I'm not here anymore, the ideas will continue to live a bit after me. That's what is most important. House of Assembly, I know you're talking about the National Assembly. By the way, thank you, Kemmy, I think we chatted on Facebook and it given me a lot of encouragement, thank you so much for coming here today. The National Assembly in Nigeria is another issue, a task that must be tackled headlong. It must be part of our agenda for the future. Now we must do something about the National Assembly. The National Assembly right now is a burden to the people of Nigeria. They have just jacked the national budget by five hundred and eight billion dollars. This was passed, the budget they passed last week. They padded it by five hundred and eight billion. And the reason is exactly the same thing, we keep rewarding the same criminals with higher position. So many of the people in the senate were former governors. In fact, about thirteen senators are undergoing trial for corruption, including the senate president, who is facing trial right now for asset, false asset declaration. That's the problem, we keep rewarding bad people with better, bigger positions and we expect our country to change, it will not change. We have to tackle these guys headlong to understand that the country is not for them, it is for the Nigerian people. And the Nigerian people may decide, if they are pushed to the wall, that they don't even need the National Assembly of the size that we have now. I keep saying it and I don't hide it, that if witches were bosses, I will abolish the senate of Nigeria. The Nigerian senate is business, it's people by thieves and busybodies and, you know, street dancers. These are just people who go there to dance. Let them go back to the job of dancing and other things that they do that is meaningful to them. But what they are doing right now is not meaningful to Nigeria and Nigerian people must stand up. So whereas we want to worry about these people now, it is also time for those of you who are interested, good people, do not hide, go and contest the position against these senators. And if you do, I will follow you to go and campaign because there's no way, I cannot campaign in Nigeria right now, proving it is the last of the five days. Anywhere you are campaigning, we'll go there and campaign together. Let more good people come. I want to see Saraki lose the election as a senator in Kwaari State. If that happens, Kwaari people can have better representation. They can elect people who will not go to the senate and only be fighting for allowances, but will be fighting for the betterment of their people. So the opportunity is there now to vote out not only Buhari, but all the hundred and nine senators and put in new senators. That is the same opportunity that has presented itself for next year. It's not too late, if any one of you is interested, if you are not afraid, come with me. We're going to take back the senate, we'll take back the House of Representatives. And I think that one too should be a part-time job so that if you don't come to work, you don't get paid. And let's just spend the money of the country, let's put the resources of Nigeria where there are need for it. In education, you know, in providing electricity, roads, good roads. Putting drugs in our hospitals, healthcare, because you mentioned healthcare, very important. Right now, healthcare system is in shambles. You know that in most places in Nigeria, when you go to see a doctor, they don't even test you. They just look at you and they diagnose you. And most likely, they diagnose you of malaria, twenty-four seven, that one is guaranteed. They just look at you, they say your eyes are a little bit red, that is malaria. To read this data, if malaria doesn't go away, they upgrade it to typhoid. And they just bombard you with antibiotics. And those are things that are killing our internal organs in Nigeria. It's the reason most Nigerians don't live beyond fifty-five years old, right? That means if you were born in Nigeria in nineteen sixty, you expected to have died. That's the story of Nigeria for you. So we'll do something about them, but it's also up to the Nigerian people to do something about them. It's not going to be the job of the president to be hunting after senators in the House of Representatives. Nigerian people have to take a decision this time around, to clean house. They must enter into their closets and take out all, clean it up, clean it up. That's part of what we must do, it's not just about me, I have been de-emphasizing my person. Because I'm just one person out of one hundred and ninety-eight million people. And I've been emphasizing the word "we", "we". And the "we" I'm talking about is not the "we" inside the Nigerian constitution. That one is a fraudulent word because nobody partook in making the Nigerian constitution, they just inserted the word "we" to the people of Nigeria. Nobody was there when they did, it was some military guys that did their contribution. Yes, and it's part of what we do with the structure is to give ourselves a branding constitution that has our nomenclature, our signature on it and that respects our rights and the respect our boundaries, our sensitivities, our culture, our politics, and codes our rights to have economic freedom. And most importantly, a constitution that is digital in nature, not the analog constitution that we are running now. So I will have to plead with the moderators and the house. We unfortunately have been invited to the suburb which is about forty minutes from here for fundraising, because as we keep saying, we need funds. Not a lot of funds, but just little funds here and there. Each time we get a dollar, we are able to, you know, spend three hundred and fifteen naira in Nigeria. This campaign is also some kind of investment into Nigeria too. Because most of the people are supporters, who are doing t-shirts and making them mostly in Nigeria. So we are creating a small, a local economy too there by getting your help to fund the campaign. But, so, we may not be able to take as many questions as we would love to take. If you want to keep asking questions, we frequently go on Facebook to do Facebook Live. You can send me questions on Facebook. So many of you actually belong to a lot of groups that I empower through Facebook. But most importantly, no matter how great your questions are, you know, it won't make any difference if you don't partake in electing the next president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. See, one advantage we have is that you actually have the president or the presidential speaker who can stand in front of you and take your questions. We have not had that luck for a long time. We have not had leaders we can interact with. Either before they go into office, when of course they go into office, you know, you are never going to see them anymore. Because the president of Nigeria, before he leaves his house to disturb it, they have to close the airspace, they have to close the lands, the roads for him. He has not left his house though. After he has arrived where he's going, the road remains closed until they now remember that the president is no longer there. They close the airspace after the president has landed. You know, there's a lot of things we do that don't make sense. So it is time to start to make sense about governance in Nigeria. So I plead with you to please, if you can, grant us permission to wrap up as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So how many questions can we take?
It depends, actually, we didn't have this, I could stand here all night if they call in questions. It's not your time, I can do one more round.
One more round? Okay, yes. Questions that weren't answered from the last time. One of those questions were on our party, can you run it as a candidate? And secondly, how do you plan originally to get this money?
Okay, those two questions are, the party question, we have not chosen a party yet. Reason is that we want to work with a coalition of parties. And we are glad you are asking this question, there's actually none of the aspirants that can boast of becoming a candidate yet. Buhari is the only person with a party that I know, I think Durotoye has a party. But they have not been chosen by their respective, respected parties as candidates yet. So we're all at the same level. But I'm sure you and you guys are anxious to know a party so that we can take it to the next level. Left to you, this will be an unopposed election. And that's the same way I feel too, so that we can start doing substantive, I mean, things of substance, like forming a cabinet or even designing our own budgets from taking up. The second question you asked regarding how we want to popularize our names is all about you. It's not about you are the ones who send the candidate, there's something they say, they call word of mouth in Nigeria. Spread it to everybody you know. All of the leaders that I empower in most countries today, in France, I think in, I think it's New Zealand, you know, there are people you have never even seen their names in Google before. People like Macron, I never heard about Macron before. Before he became president of France, if you Google his name, maybe you get a page. At my stage, if you Google by name, you probably get like fifty pages right now. So your name recognition is there, but we need to domesticate it, that's the point you're making. So that Hausa, Ibo, Ibibo, Yoruba, everybody know will know that this is the guy that. But that is up to you. And one of the ways to do it is to support us financially so that we can put out the materials out there that will put people's eyeballs on the name and the face. Good news is that people keep telling me these days that I look better than the other aspirants, so that would have to...
Alright, okay. You just talked about money and stuff like that. And one quickly tell us that we do have t-shirts on the lobby that are all for sale, ten dollars. As one way, we are raising funds for this event. And our resident candidates also have spoken how indeed they need money. In the next round of question, I would also like for him to address, if somebody wants to assist, how can they send their monetary support to the organization? That's number one. And while you were speaking, you said you are a national trade pastor. We want to use this opportunity to know if you are a Christian since you are a national trade pastor. And now I will call the next few questions.
In saying that I'm a national trade pastor, I say that in a life mode, that in the course of doing this, I've had to enter into churches, but I also have entered into mosques and there's a lot of video out there. My position is that videos will not ever be used to define us. One of Nigeria's biggest problems is the definition of persons based upon their religious background. They've used that to fool us for a long time. So just, just take me as a human being who was put here to do wonderful things that I'm about to do. And it's up to the person who sent me to define me, thank you.
Thank you for explaining that, I thought I'd give you that forum to make yourself clear. Now, we'll call three more numbers.
Zero four.
Oh, you say, not address that four, we'll do that in the next one. Addressing the phone, we'll do that now.
How to help?
Yes, so we, I thought they would put it up here. We have been raising funds transparently on GoFundMe.com. So if you go on your computer, you see GoFundMe.com/Chowarre2019. I think as of yesterday, we raised some forty-five thousand dollars, but we are still going to two million. And we would love to see that number grow astronomically. And the reason why that number is also important is that monetary spirits are watching as that is going on. For them, it's a symbol of acceptance, you know, if this guy is actually accepted, how is it that he hasn't been able to raise this amount of money? For us, it's also symbolic, we want you to own the campaign by actually going out of your comfort zone to make contributions. We have planned to open a Nigerian account, but we haven't done that simply because we also know that they will target us easily in Nigeria. They will be happy to shut down the bank that opens an account for us because we are about to shut down their ATM in Nigeria, and they know it. So we will try it, but we are not sure, so our best bet is still out here where you can, you can also write a cheque to us, but to cheque, so you know we go to my name, because I'm the one running and I'm responsible for accounting for all the funds that's coming to me. If you have Cash, which is an app, yes, Cash App on your phone, you can also use it. If you want to do that, you can ask me for my telephone number or email to which you can send that. If you have Zelle, which is also, yeah, Zelle works wonders. And that one you can send to my last name, which is chowarre@gmail.com and register to us. This is how we hope that we can do it. We are exploring other options, including even blockchain technology to raise funds. Because one of the things we are bringing to Nigeria is new money that this analog people don't know about, it's coming and we will compete very well and you'll be happy as it comes.
The next three numbers, 338718, 338506, 338497.
As they come, can Gloria also come? And I also want the chairman of the planning committee to join this team to ask a question. And I will hand over the microphone to the planning committee chairman.
Please do that now.
Please activate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, that's what I'm going to call you because you already won anyway. Thank you for coming and they've been expecting you. First of all, we use the opportunity to thank any pastor that gave us the opportunity to have this place. Thank you so much, God bless you. And also we greet our Erilu, you are welcome, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. But my question is a very, I'm from Nigeria, I'm not from any part, I'm from Nigeria. I think if we are very good in a little bit of politics, economy will be the decision-making way of how the 2019 would be played. Maybe we don't know that yet, but it's coming. The reason being that even though the guy that is there now, we may say that he's not a necessary and the guy that is coming is a funny guy too, that has already messed it up before. So to me, we are having, the only thing I can kudo the guy that is there now is because of security. I think it's the only state in Nigeria that we can bank on that it has a kind of security, that the people are not dying there every day according to the system of Nigeria. So on that, we can give it to him. So what I'm bringing out is that when the other guy who are there before, the wife who are the one controlling the commissioner and everybody mess everything up, he's a commissioner, he's a minister now. He's lying about Ajawkuta, about the Arhantin and everything. He's not even performing. But because of the party that he is now, I am hundred percent sure that even fire share you said, with all this garrulous behaviour, he's a country now because they will rid, they will fight him to the end because they see him as an enemy. So what can you do with that kind of situation that the elections? Because my point is that we are going to win.
That's right.
We are going to win.
That's right.
But I want Nigeria not to forget history a little bit. Don't let us forget Tabeola. Even though you won the election, you own Nigeria, go there for, they still read the election. Though in the military, that this guy can do it because Ubaidi Piper dictated it all. The high-necked man was put there by Buhari. That's my question.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gloria Nkosie Ochi. Well, by Nigerian standard, they will sound from Abay State, but that's where my parents come from. Because I was born and bred in Lagos and I lived thirty years of my life in river state. I've never lived in Abay State apart from visiting. So that is one of my questions. Because part of what is wrong with Nigeria is this state of origin. You can't say I am from Abay State. I have never lived there. I only visit there. It's only just by God's grace that I speak people. That's number one. Number two, by God's grace, I'm a professional accountant of over thirteen years' experience. You were talking about fundraising. You don't need to go break your head. You said you're going to do the same. One dollar for everybody, a million people is one million dollar. And when you convert it, that is three hundred and fifty-sixty million naira. So you don't need, everybody here can afford one dollar. Yeah, this is what we, because if we want to, if I give you speculative money, I want to control you. So let's, there are practical ways of doing things. Everybody give one dollar or maximum ten dollar. Don't give me more than ten dollar. When you give me ten dollar, you don't have anything to control me. No, it's true. There are practical ways of doing things. Another question, how are you going to do? Okay, you've even been causing problems with, take it back, take it back. Let's be practical. If we, this thing, I'm supposed to be at work. I left work in the morning when to bring him into the airport and I left again, I am here. So if I don't want to talk, maybe if I don't, the someone I'm letting, no letting talk, I will scatter this message. That is me. I'm a practical person. So what am I saying? I told him we are going to, we are still going to talk. So I don't even know when I'm giving you my alliances. When we talk, I'll talk to you. I'll talk to other of the listeners. Then we know where we're going. But what, why I came this out? We really want a change in Nigeria. You die once. You die today, you not die tomorrow. That is it. So like people that are saying, take it slow, take it slow. That is what has kept us where we are today. So it's either you make up your mind, you're coming out or you're not coming out. That is me. When I, like I told them, this is a very, I'm sorry, I know a lot of people have put in a lot of things, but organization is something. It's like, let me elaborate a little. I worked for an Odo man for ten years and I told him, I'm the finance director here. You don't take financial decisions without me. And it stood like that until I left. You are the empty, I don't contest it, but I'm the finance director. So it is, if you have a position, take all the powers around it. Nobody gives it to you. That is how it is. So you make up your mind, you're coming out, you're coming out. If you're not coming out, you're not coming out. So if you want to save your life, then don't come out. Put it on the line. That is what it is. So and all of us that are supporting, if you want to support, let us support. Don't come, at least not all this, like all this take it back, all those slogans, we will all go back. No, what I'm saying, I'm not saying is it's not something, we are going for something new. Let us go for something new. Our problem have corruption, corruption. Let us go for something new. The National Assembly need to be dismantled, a lot of things. We need to talk. Thank you.
Mr. Chouore, my name is Uche. I'm glad you are here and I am very grateful to see you. You are going for something big. I hope you know that. If I may ask you, sir, are you a politician? If you are not, who are you? Another one is that, you know, you've been going across the length and breadth of Nigeria, meeting people, the grassroots Nigerians to be specific. My question is this. On the process of going across the length and breadth of Nigeria, you have been having town hall meetings with them as well. You have been asking questions. Which issues or which issues that you feel strikes your mind that these ordinary Nigerians are so much interested? And which of the issues do you know that you have been so much interested in knowing what you can do as regards to solving them? Thank you. Yeah, God bless you. Oh, wow. You know my voice is a tiger and lion voice. Put your hands together for that. God bless you. Mr. President, God bless you. I want to personally thank you for coming to Dallas, Texas. We, the residents of Dallas, we are good people. And I believe on behalf of my brothers, we are not going to put you into shame. Am I correct? When I say Dallas, you say what? Texas. Dallas, Dallas, Turkey, Turkey. God bless you. Let me tell you something. I flew down from Dallas, Texas to meet him in New York. I have never met him in my life. When I tried to buy my ticket, American airline said, say something to Dallas. I said, really? I mean to New York. Six hundred plus? I said, no. Then I take a buy. Tomorrow, full army has men, raid my mother or kill my father. I have a member in my movement. First of all, this is mega comrade, the president of a poor innocent citizen worldwide. I am the president of the poor. I came from a poor family, raised by a poor mother, by a poor father. A home with no window. I know what I went through. But I'm proud here to stand with him. This is my G right there. I used to work in St. G right here, Dossi, Dossi St. G in Dallas right here, if you know that. So I worked in maximum security in Oklahoma. Now I'm working on this closed prison here in Texas. So however, I want to thank those that have came here today. I wasn't a part of this movement, but when I see the truth, I follow the truth. We all came here, I see constant, the same question, question. It's all the same from London, New York, Houston. We should applaud him. I want everybody to stand up and clap for this. Man, it's not easy. Put your hands together for the next president of Nigeria. May God bless you, sir. God bless you. I want you to know that I love you so much. I am ready to die for this movement. That is number one. This is not going to be easy. Enough of grammar. We, this is, we have had academia before. We have professionals. Professional, good luck Jonathan, I met him in Houston, one-on-one. So if we can call Mohamed Bouhari, which many people call Mohamed Bouahoa. The many of Bouahoa, just open your hand, look, let them be where, jabrata. Can anybody bring Mohamed Bouhari to come and stand here for one hour, two hours? That we should not be a busy opportunity. God bless you once again. He have been going from one town hall to another, one town hall to another. What else do Nigerian want to be shown that he has not done already? I went to his studio in New York. We went to a restaurant. He refused for me to even carry food. So let me not go there. We should be happy. If Mohamed Bouhari can get out of the bubble, he would have known that we, the poor citizens, we are done. So I'm using this opportunity to beg everyone here. Please, don't put Dallas into shame. Let us take them. If we don't have money yet today, me and we borrow. Because flying from New York down here is not one dollar. We don't have money. We are already poor. We are need to borrow. Is it by asking question, are we going to get out of this mess, our political cabas, political criminals and political terrorists have placed our country into? Hell no. It's never going to happen. Sir, the truth is that the truth has to be spoken. That's right. I remember five years ago when I watched his video in New York City when he went to a town hall. The same thing he just did, oh, respect yourself. Why you didn't respect yourself? Guess what? He is now running for the next president. And that video caught my heart. So brothers and sisters, we have to be honest to ourselves. We are going to host him again in Dallas. So I mean, we have a lot of places we are going to go. I'm not yet to ask a question. I am here to tell you, if you can, if you have your cell phone right now, just type in GoFundMe, GoFundMe slash Chowore dot com slash Chowore, you will see it. Take it back. Please, in New York, right there, we raise almost two thousand. In Houston, I watched them yesterday. I said, when they come to Dallas, we're going to be there. We know a lot of people here can do it. I am begging you. We cannot stop corruption if we are not ready to finance any political campaign. Political campaign, Barack Obama had donated huge money for him. Huge money, not one dollar. Every day they send me email. We have a battle. Donate to the war room. He's doing Barack Obama. I know they call war room. So brothers and sisters, I am going to call it short. I am begging everyone, please, please. If you really want corruption, it's the founder of every crime in Nigeria. Without corruption, there will be no police brutality. There will be no injustice. There will be no snake swallowing money or monkey carrying money around. Hey, that one, one key, it says transmission, transmission. Calamity have already been written on it. Thank God we are in the church. So brothers and sisters, please, go to GoFundMe right now. Let's do it and let's say then we can do it. Money supporter in this campaign. Put your hands together for me. Two, it's not easy. God bless you. Okay, he didn't want to ask any question. As you all know, when we started this event, we had a lot of people here and the house is almost getting empty. And we want to raise funds from an empty house. As I want to thank the pastor again, the chairman of this house for allowing us to come here to have this event at no cost to us. I want to call the chairman of the fundraising committee to appeal to us. I don't know if you want to answer those questions and you'll be excused while we do the fundraising. That would be great also.
Thank you. I will ask, I mean, I answered this last few questions. I think the last question came from Gloria. That's Gloria here in the house. She's still, yes. I want to personally thank you for coming to the airport and for, you know, doing great things for us and for this movement. I know you said you have not made up your mind. I know you're just joking. You already made up your mind when you woke up in the morning and decided to go to the airport to work on a guy you've never met before. Yes. I will abolish the state of origin concept completely. I replace it with the state of residence. That is the way we should treat our system in Nigeria. People who are asking for unity of Nigeria should know that at the same time, they're asking Nigerians where they come from. That's the way it should be. The suggestion to donate ten dollars, of course, we have said it, you can donate whatever you have. Nothing is too small. We even had somebody who said to us that he would be donating his tights for now. But I don't want to, the last thing we want to do is to get in the way of pastors. Yes, Uche, you asked if I'm a politician. No, I'm not a politician. The reason I don't use the word politician is because politicians are people who are regarded as scums of the earth in Nigeria. Who lie, deceive. And I am trying to become Nigeria's leader through a transparent and acceptable means of coming to office, an election. Whatever you can describe me as after the election is won, is who I am. I'm not necessarily the label of the politician. Ah, you asked a very, very important question about what do Nigerians actually want as you go around, what do they ask you most for? And I would say that not only do we pull Nigerians through this town hall meeting, we also pull them online. Interestingly, in Nigeria, Nigerians don't actually want a lot, which is kind of interesting. There's no way that we go to Nigeria that they ask for bridges. You know, they just want just a little bit. In the nuts, the women we met, men we met were asking for schools for their children. Keeps a macaranta, which is the name of schools. In other places, people were asking for just electricity, you know, just give us lights so that we can sleep in peace at night. Because what light does is not only drive out darkness, it also would prevent crime by almost fifty percent. Because if more men there is lights, criminals don't have anywhere to hide easily. It's the same thing with infrastructure. It's very difficult for an armed robber to stand in a highway between Dallas and Houston, right? Because it would take a lot of work to stand there with the people coming with their heavy duty cars, vehicles. Those SUVs, they won't wait for you. If you get one, they're not likely to get the second one. So but when you don't have these things in place, then you don't have anything. But in general, by way of our general analytics, sorry, analytics of what people are asking for, the most important thing to them is health. It's unbelievable. Everybody keeps saying hospital, health, doctors, and you know it. Their reasoning is clear. Health is wealth. But when you look at this, what is the greatest cause of health problem in Nigeria? Stress. Stress. I don't know how many of you have what they call back pain all the time. Each time doctors ask you to go and do an operation for back pain, don't do it. Figure out how you change your lifestyle and your back will be restored most of the time. Because the biggest cause of back pain is stress. When you are stressed out all the time, you will be sick. When you are stressed out, your immunity will be very, very low. So the stress in Nigeria is too much. You stress about everything nobody else in the world stresses about. That is why Nigerians, if we survive this period, they should be cloning us in other places. There's nothing we cannot survive. There's no way we cannot survive. There's no way we cannot survive. Nigerians are strong people.
Yes, very.
I have to say that because you imagine, how is it that people can survive in this place? And they will still smile. They will still, on Saturday, they will still wear clothes and go to party. They, they are suffering and smiling. To the extent that they said that we are the happiest people in the world. But do you know that that is true? But the reason we are happy is not the reason why other people are happy. Nigerians have a gene, they call the cannabis gene. It's true, you can, you can Google it. Yes, weed, Ibo, we have the gene in us. It's true. It's, it's the result of scientific research. That's why we keep going no matter what. We just keep going, it doesn't end. So... But what I've expressed most finally I would say is that they want somebody, they want a new lease of life. And we owe it to them to give it to them come February sixteen, twenty nineteen. Let me just say thank you so much to the organizers of this event. And I want to thank some of my friends, people that I've known since years, several years ago. I want to particularly single out a friend of mine at the back of the room, his name is Francis Indifoli. He taught me a lot of tricks in life. We attended the same secondary school together. He knew mathematics very well, I hated maths. And he was one of the people who said, you know, even if you don't like mathematics, you can make it in life, but don't ignore maths, you know? So he was my teacher in secondary school, you know, where you have the guy who is more brilliant than you and he's always teaching you. But he did something more serious. We attended the University of Lagos together as well. He follows me everywhere I go. And he was also very supportive of me throughout the university. But he was the first person to ever tell me to start a website. Yes. He was in Nigeria and this is the reason why you know that Nigeria is waiting to. No, I was already in America, he was in Nigeria and he knew about websites. I didn't know that it was possible to operate a website as an individual. And I was living in the US. In those days, I used to use AOL to log on to email, to data, when it would give you some sound. So he said, you know, you can create a website for yourself because after you left the university, people didn't stop talking about you. I said, Francis, you know, I think I've left Nigeria and I want Nigeria to leave me alone. It was my first four years in the US, it pretty hurt it. But he kept mentoring me to the point that I obtained a web address. And that was how, he was one of the first to help me build Sahar Reporters, from Nigeria, yes. And he's been the one who kept telling me ever that, you know, one day you can be president of Nigeria. He's always been there. Yes. And I thank you, Francis, because your dream is about to come, to become true. Thank you very much again to all of you for coming. We thank you very much, people watching us on what we call Take It Back TV online. We thank you so much for keeping, everywhere I go these days, people say, yes, I watch all your town hall meetings online, so a lot of people are following us. But we have to do beyond just following, as everybody kept saying. We must move from watching to action. Good night.
Thank you!
Thank you, Mr. President. A round of applause for our president, Ewes.